All right, good evening, everyone. This is the Town of Monroe Board of Finance. Regular meeting, Thursday, July 15. Please note this meeting is being conducted as a hybrid meeting in compliance with Governor's executive orders and such. Members of this body may accept invited presenters and members of the press may attend in person or remotely. All members of the public may attend remotely using photo media electronic technology. And women members in person publicly attended meetings have been committed. Stationing at the capacity of the meeting room, the meeting is being conducted in real time. So will the public and any member of the public. We anonymously copy the agenda and related materials have been posted to the Town of Monroe website and public section. Notice is hereby given that on short and fifty because this can be accessed through a hybrid meeting remotely at one time. Mode access is granted slowly by the technology provider and not controlled by the Town of Monroe. In like the event that appears we are approaching set limits, the Chairman retains the right to adjourn and continue the meeting on later date using technology appropriate to ensure all members of the public participation. The meeting is being recorded and we ask that all those participating remotely, the mutual microphone from west to right can speak. If they do, play the new screen, it become part of the recording which will post to the Town's website on Monday. The use of the chat feature is prohibited and will not be considered during this meeting at any time. A set voice, the agenda, the meeting will feature in public participation. Any written comments from the public regarding any business which would otherwise be remains in public participation are received between the date the agenda was posted through what hour before the start of the meeting, fully ready to the recording during public participation. All right, we will call it to order. Review of the meeting minutes and voting record for June 17.
Mike, I got a question. Do we have to name everybody since we're doing this as a hybrid or is that over now?
Uh, yeah, we probably should just to make call roll is a great idea just in case we do it. So, John Nostes is there? Here? Steve Kirsch?
Here.
Thank you. Here. Rebecca O'Donnell.
Here.
And myself, Mike Renshaw. And I see we also have Joe Cobb, who is intended on the chat later. All right, thanks, John. That will be fun to choose a minute to vote here.
Mike, Steve Kirsch, I move to accept the meeting minutes and the voting record for June 17, 2021.
Perfect. Do I have a second?
Dane Kirkneve, I'll second the motion.
Uh, any questions, discussions, comments on the minute? All right, hearing done. John?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, first electmen, you are all.
All right, thank you. So, just a couple of items to update you on. One is that the shared services agreement with the town, the Board of Education, was, I told you at the last meeting had been approved by the Board of Ed. It was approved by the, I just realized there was a typo in my update. No, I'm sorry. No, it's correct. June 20th is the correct meeting. The Town Council approved this as well, so that agreement has since been fully executed. So that is in force. The second thing is an update on state ECS. I had reported last time that the state was redoing the funding levels in the biannual budget and a resumption of the phase-in to reach their calculated funding levels by fiscal year 30. And I was asking for and was waiting for further details with my thanks to our new state rep, Tony Scott. He was able to get us some specifics and I got these revised estimates from the state office of fiscal analysis. You know, the bad news is they are looking to ultimately reduce the town's ECS levels by just under a million dollars. If there is any good news, I guess it would be that it is still going to be phased in through 2030. So I've given you the reduction, which is about $173,000 a year through 2029. It is flat funded for the next fiscal years, so that is also some good news. I also attached the ECS formula, which is, was provided by the state as revised. You'll see some of the changes there. It's kind of like a red line of that infogram or information graphic. So for example, in the first part of that formula, they look at the number of English language learners times, it used to be times 15%, now it's times 25%. So that's where those, that's how the ECS formula was changed during this budget, state budget session. So I thought, I'm certainly not an expert in this and I did not intend to go through it, but I thought it would be good information for the board to have. And so that is how they get to our new number and how it gets phased in until fiscal year 30. And that's, that's my update.
Okay. I did go through that formula and my head started hurting painfully.
Yep.
So I, I mean, that was one of the most convoluted things I have ever seen in a financial formula.
Uh, yeah.
But it was truly impressive how unusual that was. So we'll leave it at that. All right.
Mike, before we go on, if I may raise a question, I don't know whether it's for the first electmen or for Joe, but this is regardless of what happens to our enrollment? No, no. So the, you'll see that the numbers here are estimated each year, right? So because the, you know, this is a formula and a lot of the inputs of the formula are going to change year over year based upon the town situation at that time, the numbers would get, you know, the formula has to be.
The first calculation is.
Will be reappalled every year. So everything, everything being equal, this is how, this is where the state's estimates are coming out. But no, I mean, we do get, we do get, it would be subject to.
The first part of the formula is the number of students, right?
All right, so if we, as we can, if we continue along this path of adding students, then this reduction will not be to this great degree, everything else being equal. I would agree that.
I run all the math, but I got the headache reading this twice, so I think we'd have to run the formula because it's convoluted. But in theory, you're correct.
Yeah, I agree.
Cost of.
Thank you.
All right, public participation. Anybody there in person that are on the phone? Anybody in the public who make one more call? All right, hearing done, we move on. We still have our placeholder there that we're going to go through. Next item is WMNR budget.
Yes, so as you know, MNR presents their budget every year to both the Board of Finance and the Town Council. Because of just the timing, this did go to council already. It was adopted by council. I think you know that they present this every year, although there's, their funding is through donations and grants, so it does not, it does not impact our operating budget other than actually some, some contributions back towards back office overhead. With that, I mean, Mr. Anderson is here if you have any questions or want any further information about that, but this is pretty, pretty straightforward stuff. So I'd like to ask a question about the, the idea of splitting and making WMNR separate. If that's the case, then you all would take all the back office function as well?
What would you say to that?
I'd say that's not what, we're talking about the budget. I don't, the budget request, I don't think that's.
Right.
An item on our agenda here.
Yeah, I don't know where you're going, Steve, with that. Is somebody proposing that?
I thought I read that someplace. Now I can't find.
I'm not aware of it. I mean, people had talked about trying to sell it a couple of years back, but that was the only thing I was aware of. I mean, this is the way we've run it through, since I've been here, is they just present their budget every year, they give us a contribution, then they do their fundraising, and it's more informational than anything else.
Mike, I think what Steve's referring to is the last section of the letter from Kurt to the, to us.
Got it.
Talks about the WMNR benefits and there's a suggestion about potentially separating. That's, I, Steve, that may be where you saw that.
Yes, I think.
WMNR could have.
Maybe he can speak to what separates means
Yes, I can simply say that it was an idea. I think it would be best to describe it as not ripe for consideration at this point, but it's just an idea. And details are left for time and another place.
Okay, well, yeah, yeah, it was in that section. So it was an idea that I hadn't heard and.
Okay. Well, that sounds like a more involved thing because a couple of years ago, there was, I mean, the town technically owns license, I believe, but that sounds like that would be a whole separate meeting discussion of how that would work. I would not necessarily be opposed to it because, you know, I'm not really sure what we're doing in the radio business anyways, but it would certainly be something we'd have to, I think, talk about a lot more depth and probably with council.
Yeah, I thought it was an interesting idea based on their ability to raise additional money, have a diverse board, et cetera. So I just wondered if this idea had those positives, would any of the downside be that they would have to do the back office work and the town would no longer receive their contribution for such work? And if this hasn't gone even that far to think about it, that's fine. I was just, I just curious.
Yeah, I think it would also be involved with, I mean, you know, there is an asset to owning the station. So, you know, obviously the town would need to be compensated for that asset. So that would be a negotiation that, you know, I would assume the first electmen would have to start with the board and have that discussion.
Yeah, I'll just say, any concept of this regard is something that is certainly, you know, this is a matter for the Town Council to consider if and when anything ever became of this. This is highly, I think it's just an idea that is being, a concept's being raised, it's highly premature for the Board of Finance to really deliberate over this.
I would agree. Okay? Anybody have any other questions, concerns, comments on this?
Do we need a formal motion to approve the budget or is it just FYI for us, Mike?
My recollection was it was always just an FYI.
Okay.
Ron, do you, or Ken, do you know, there's no action we need to take, correct?
I mean, the council, the council of the past has acted to, to approve it, really just kind of a, more or less, I think, is more of an endorsement. I don't, I think you could certainly make an argument that it, the mayor, you know, whether it's necessary or not, I think is probably, you know, something that could be argued one way or the other, but there's certainly no harm in the, in the board.
I'm having no problem.
Indicating their concurrence with the.
Support of it. Right.
We should probably make a motion.
Yeah.
Because we do some on the warrants.
That's true. Good point.
Perfect. Let's make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, Steve Kirsch, I'll make a motion to approve the WMNR budget as presented.
Wait a second.
Rebecca O'Donnell, I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing done. John?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, very good. Thank you, guys. Review of the municipal finance reports. Ron, is there anything you want to point out with us?
Yeah, so, you know, I'll take any questions first. If not, I'll, does anyone have any questions on anything in the packet?
Yeah, Ron, I have one, one question on page, the year-to-date budget report, page 17, which is page 50 of the packet, along with page 19, which is page 52 of the packet. Is there a reason that the Board of Education's year-to-date?
So on the town side, we just encumbered the whole thing. I'll get into that in a minute.
Okay. I know. Your only question?
So the, on page 19, pages down further, you see the 1.5 million available on the town side? So that's, right now, that's, that's what we're looking for, for a expenditure surplus on the town side. So overall, on the revenue side, and this was thanks to our tax collector in large part, as you would recall, we had a $8.5 million appropriation of fund balance to balance the budget. So that's, you know, you got a structural deficit built into the fiscal year 21 budget. On the revenue side, we're gonna, you came in about 5.2 million, over?
Ex- my.
Yeah, okay. The expenditure side, just on the, just on the town, you're looking at a $1.5 million expenditure surplus. Net $2.8 million revenue deficit, but we had budgeted 8.5, so obviously that's a, there's a pickup there. And right now, I feel comfortable saying we're looking at a little bit north of a $1.5 million surplus on the Board of Ed. So you've got a, about, you know, depending on year-end transfers, you know, not, you know, disregarding any year-end transfers at this point, expenditure surplus of 3 million, revenue deficit of 2.8, so you're, you're looking close to, you know, about breakeven or slightly better than breakeven, which is pretty good considering there was a built-in deficit. So that's kind of where we sit overall, Mike.
Okay.
And again, that's not taking into account any decisions, you know, with funds at year-end, you know, moving anything into any funds.
And how, how up to date are you guys as far as, you know, getting everything in and, you know, do we think we'll have, you know, stronger numbers in the next month, six weeks kind of thing?
So on the, on the town side, we're probably, I'm going to say about six weeks out. Board of Ed, we're probably, we're about, we're about two weeks out of being, of having
All right. Anybody have any other questions for Ron? All right, tax collector?
Okay. I hit 99% collection rate, which I'm very happy about.
We're all very happy about that.
Yes.
Between the, but between taxes and interest and leads and everything, I was over, what the budget is, 5.4, just taxes alone, I think that's where Ron got the 5.2. That was taxes alone was 5.2. So pretty well, the end of the year, very well. And that is about it. Collections have been coming in very strong. A lot of people paying second halves and everything. I'm really surprised at how busy we have been for the last couple, two weeks. So that's where we stand right now.
So you're saying new collections for current fiscal year, people are paying.
In full.
In full, you're back to the, what it used to look like for the amount of people that pay?
Higher than we were last year at this time.
Okay.
There's no place to put your money. This will take advantage of the fact.
I, I don't know what the reasoning why, but we don't question it. As long as money's coming in, it's better than money coming in than not coming in at all.
That's always true.
Have you gotten, you know?
Estros, they come in at the end of the month.
At the end of the month?
Not bad. I think for motor vehicle, we're at 30% collection for the overall, which is really high for this year time period. But I think we're at, when I say 15% with real estate, but none of the banks have come in yet, so that's pretty high. Crystal property, they always pay at the end, those are the businesses, so we're low below of that, but they always wait until the end of the month. And it's a lot of the big ones, you know, they come in. We got a couple that pay very.
I assume so, okay.
But yes, they're very strong. We finally are caught up. When we left today, everything has caught up. All the mail was re, just, you know, all the return mail was out and all the mail posted at the end of today, so we're pleased.
Okay, awesome. All right, Treasury?
So the Treasury's report is, if you watched the Fed a little earlier this week, inflation is transitory. Don't pay attention to the guy behind the curtain. They're not changing their policy or their stance in terms of interest rates or liquidity, putting money into the market. I met with Ron earlier this week and we went through every bank account the Town of Monroe has to identify any bank accounts that were not producing interest. And we're going to take the next step, which is talk to some of those account holders and figure out what's going on there and then talk to the bank and see about generating whatever interest we can on those accounts. The state of Connecticut, and I emailed you a kind of interim report, suddenly bounced up the stiff rate from zero after 30 days to 0.11. And beginning of August, I'm going to get back together with Ron and get aggressive on buying CDs after Debs had all those wonderful tax collections. I think that's it.
Anybody got anything else for Mr. Earl Very good. We have review of projected enrollment of the Monroe Public Schools. Here. Joe, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Mike. I appreciate it. Hi, everybody. I just wanted to keep everybody apprised of our enrollment. I know I've talked about this, this was kind of the one, you know, the one variable as we, as we crafted our budget in, you know, starting back in October, November, one of our assumptions was that, you know, enrollment would, you know, be somewhat stable and as we've learned over the past, you know, especially the last 12 months, you know, that has not necessarily been the case and we've had, you know, a lot of, you guys know what's going on with the housing market and whatnot. And so I just, I'm just trying to keep everybody apprised of where we are. If you look at this sheet, it, the color didn't come out very well, but basically Fawn Hollow and Stepney are the two that are, you know, giving us the most, you know, the most angst right now. When we projected out from, at budget time, you know, we said, all right, if we remain relatively flat with enrollment, we had about, we had 84 kids, as you see. On the left side is our enroll, our projected enrollment at the, at budget time. Okay, so back in October when we were doing this, and all we could do for kindergarten is just kind of roll over to the next, roll over to the next year. And you see what's happening, especially those, those first two lines in kindergarten and first grade. Kindergarten, we had 84, we were projecting 84 kids. We are in, with four sections, with class sizes of 21, that's up 123 kids. You can see what's happening. Fawn Hollow is up, I mean, all the schools are up, but Fawn Hollow is our biggest school and it's up the most. You know, we had 583 kids projected at budget time, we're at 645 now. The three big pressure areas there are kindergarten, first grade. So you see, we had originally, you know, figured on four sections in kindergarten, four sections in first grade. Now we're looking at six and five. And then the other projection was in fifth grade, we were looking at, you know, soon after the budget, we were down under 100 kids and we thought, okay, we might be able to steal a section from fifth grade and move them, and move them to either kindergarten or first grade. But now that fifth grade number, we just had, I think, I was just told, two sets of twins that just moved in over there. So we're at 105. So that's actually, that would be with four sections right now, that would be two sections of 26, or three sections of 26 and one section of 27. Same, similar story down with Stepney, where we had 60 kids in, in the fall. We're looking at 74 right now. And then first grade is, is trickling up from, you know, we're at 66 now. That was actually a little higher. That's come down a little bit. So we got some pressure there and we've always had a little bit of pressure in third grade at Stepney. So again, just trying to keep everybody apprised. I did meet with the bus company, I did, a couple of our board members met with me as well. You know, we are looking at rerouting some streets, starting with kids who are, you know, we don't want to split families, obviously, and we don't want to start switching kids from schools now. But what we're trying to do is look at some of the roads and where we have incoming kindergarteners without older siblings that we'd have to, you know, split schools, starting to move some of those neighborhoods into, into Monroe Elementary for now. That will ease this number a little bit. It doesn't, it doesn't do enough significantly. There's just not enough kids living on the fringes and that's what we were looking at. We were trying to figure out, do we have enough kids living on the fringes of, on these streets where we could, you know, get them over to one school or another? There's not enough to do that, but go, may not fix the, completely fix the problem this year. It'll help it a little bit, but hopefully in the years to come too, it'll help us balance out a little bit.
Mike, may I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Yes. Steve Kirsch, two, two items, Joe, if I might. Number one, from now toward the beginning of school, what kind of enrollment pickup do you normally get? I mean, do you still get a lot, a significant number or is most of your enrollment, pre-enrollment in?
You know, Steve, the hard thing, you know, in, in years, we still get some pickup between now and, and the start of school for sure. This year, like all bets are off the table. I mean, I was at, it was like a week ago, like two weeks ago, we were at 115 at Fawn Hollow and then it jumped up eight kids. So it's, it's really, it's, it's really difficult to say, you know, where this is, where this is going to land and, you know, unfortunately, historical models aren't really helping us right now.
You're an uncharted territory.
I mean, this is our baseline. We're, we're pretty, you know, we're pretty sure. There's going to be a couple of kids, you know, that we're going to be able to move out of some of these schools. Like I said, I think I can get, you know, the Fawn Hollow, I think there's like three or four kids in kindergarten that we're going to be able to move, so that'll help a little bit, but not enough to, to do anything. And then, I think to your point, Steve, we're going to still see more kids coming in.
Okay, thank you. My, my second question, we'll start with a statement. I noticed that for special ed, between January and the end of May, you increased a net of 43 students. You've canceled the Board of Ed meeting for this month where you, where you normally would publish the June number. Do you have a feeling for what you added in June? In terms of additional special?
I'll get that for you, Steve. Ron, I don't know if Darlene shared that with us, but I, I'll get that for you.
I haven't seen it, Joe, no.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, because I went, I went out to look and obviously, since there was no meeting, there was no agenda, hence no report. But I, I did think it was interesting that at least through May.
But I, I did think it was interesting that at least through May, you've got a net of, of forty-three since you submitted the, you know, and approved your budget in January.
Yes, yep. And as we've been, um, you know, all of these enrollments that we're getting, as you can imagine, um, you know, there's, uh, you know, there's services associated with, with some of the students coming in, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
Thanks, Steve.
Appreciate it. Anybody else have any questions for Joe?
No, just appreciate keeping us informed, Joe. Thanks very much for that.
Yeah, very much so. We love the, the fact that you're always with us here. It wasn't always like that. No, truly, we do appreciate it. I mean, it's the right way to do it. So kudos to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody, uh, is there anything else? I think that we covered everything on the agenda.
Mike, it's Rebecca. Rebecca O'Donnell.
Hey Rebecca.
I, um, I just had a comment. So I know that old business, we had the three-year budget. Um, and I happened to read an article where our neighbor Newtown has a template that their Board of Finance uses. And it actually, I don't know if it does five to ten years, but, um, I don't know if we have any, uh, relationships with the, with, you know, our friends over there.
We do. We do actually, because, you know, when everything was going on with Sandy Hook, we worked very closely with the finance department there and they were always very supportive and very helpful and honestly ran a very tight ship. Um, so we have shared things over the years. So I'm sure Ron could reach out because, uh, you know, obviously, you know, some of my best ideas were stolen. So, uh, if we could use a template or find out what they were already using, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. I, I mean, I just read an article where, you know, their board has been able to kind of plug numbers in and, and see what the effects are. So I was interested in seeing if we could see what that looks like for formulating ours.
Joe, Ron, do you still have a relationship up there?
Uh, absolutely. Yeah, I could, I could give, uh, finance director's a great guy. He'll, uh, he'd be more than happy to, uh, share whatever.
Yeah, I know. We even, we went up there once, you know, a number of years ago and met with.
Awesome.
So I mean, we've, yeah, we've got a very good relationship. They're, you know, very good to work with. Always have shared stuff with us. So that's a great idea.
Awesome. Yeah, I just wanted to mention that. I saw that.
No, I think that's great. Let's leave, we'll leave it at that to Ron to reach out and maybe we can get back on this because it's been sitting there for a long time. So I would really like to pick that up.
Yeah, and, you know, if there's any, anything to do to alleviate Ron from starting from scratch, you know, let's,
Right.
let's do it.
I love it. All right, great.
Uh, and by Ron, we mean Heidi.
Exactly.
The dream team.
I'm going to take it if I heard that.
Oh my God, that was beautiful.
When it becomes, when it comes to the three-year budget, my, right?
Exactly. Absolutely.
All things budget.
Oh, jeez.
All things budget, exactly. Heidi is great here. Awesome. All right. Someone want to make a motion?
Steve Kirsch, motion to adjourn.
All right. Very good. Thank you, guys.